Good evening. The regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:00 PM on February 25th, 2025. The regular business meeting of the Oseola School Board is being conducted in the boardroom of the Education Service Center. The meeting can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of tonight's meeting will also be available on the district website. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left and your right are Director Kelsey Dawson, Director Erica Foster, Director Thomas Brooks, myself, Tanya Prince, Director Keith Tate, and Director Sarah Mitchell. Also present in the boardroom is Superintendent Dr. Kim Heil and members of the superintendent's cabinet, as well as our school board representatives. Reason Atkins for 279 Online, Gavin Chabica at Maple Grove Senior. And that's all we got. Okay, thank you. Those of you who can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Dawson, please pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, are there any additions to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Director Dawson. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Director Mitchell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes, six zero. Our next standing item is recognitions. We have no recognitions this evening. All right, our next agenda, we're very happy to welcome scholars from our high schools this evening. So this is part of our board meetings where we have the opportunity to really see and hear from our scholars. So tonight, they'll be presenting Charting New Waters: The CTE Journey at Park Center Senior High School. Dr. Antoine Harris, Park Center Senior Principal, will start us off with introductions. Dr. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Heil, Cabinet Members, Directors. I am Dr. Harris, the unwavering Principal of Park Center Senior High. Members of our leadership team are present this evening to share their insight and provide assistance. Eric Thompson, one of my assistant principals, and Matt Soder, our respected technical education instructor. Along with us today are two of our exceptional student representatives, Aaron Dungy and Jack Janowak. We extend a warm welcome to the esteemed Pirate families who have come as well. We are pleased to join you this evening to share a brief overview of the remarkable experiences and opportunities our scholars are engaged in at Park Center. We have provided each of you a packet that outlines our CTE plan and their connection to our international faculty principals. I will now hand it over to Mr. Soder, who will present the CTE information.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Soder. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight about something that directly impacts both our students and the success and strength of our community: career and technical education. As a CTE teacher, my goal is to connect the strengths and interests of the student with real career opportunities after high school. In CTE, we don't just create engineers, computer scientists, skilled tradespeople, mechanics, doctors, nurses. What we do is build student confidence through rigorous, hands-on, industry-based projects. We equip them with the skills to be competent by developing leadership and problem solving. We teach resilience and give them the courage to follow their passions. This is our mission, and tonight I will show you how Park Center is charting new waters. Throughout this presentation, you will hear me use the phrase "preparing students for university, technical college, and on-the-job training." Not every student follows the same path after high school. My hope is these new strands equip students with the skills, knowledge, and opportunities to find a career path that fits them. Think of these strands not as direct or destinations, excuse me, but directions. So we've got construction management that we'll be introducing shortly, and manufacturing. Students that are passionate about these careers, both STEM and technical, it's not just about whether they become an engineer or a construction manager. It's about keeping them engaged in the fields that excite them. When students are aware of the many career opportunities that they have, they can start at an education level that makes sense for them, knowing, no matter where they end up, the doors will always open for them for future growth. If we can capture their interest, they can find their own path. CTE isn't just important, it's essential. Tonight I'll be showing how Park Center is expanding CTE opportunities by launching two career strands, giving students direct, meaningful career options after graduation. The first strand I'd like to introduce to our board is our construction management strand. This strand is designed to give students a comprehensive understanding of the construction industry through coursework and management, engineering, design, and business. We will also include safety construction practices through the training for OSHA 30, as well as industry-aligned technology such as the drone program that introduces students to real-world applications in surveying and construction site management. Additionally, we are working to build a direct partnership with North Pennupin Community College, giving students the opportunity to start on the path towards a construction management degree. A construction management degree is typically a four-year degree, but the skills and experiences students gain in this strand will prepare them for whatever the future holds. These are the courses that we offer currently today here at Park Center. This is the foundation of our program, but this isn't just Park Center. These are courses that are offered throughout the district. Students from many high schools already have access to these foundational tech ed courses, all designed to give them a strong start in career-focused learning. These classes prepare students for university, technical college, and on-the-job training. This means that no matter where a student attends high school in our district, they will have the opportunity to explore career pathways and develop technical skills. I brought a couple of examples of the projects, and you're going to see some from our student speaker as well. This is a box that a student made in our WoodTech course. So in our WoodTech course, we're really getting students engaged with the typical materials and construction machines. And so students are making these along with a couple of other smaller projects. 21st Century Skills, I'll direct you to the screen. This is a picture of students at Park Center that are wiring up kind of a mock wall. So getting real-life kind of construction practices, skilled trades, in a small classroom setting. So we're not wiring up an entire wall, but they're getting the same exact experience. We've got light fixtures, outlets, switches, most common residential appliances. I did bring in a robot. This is a car that just stole out of my classroom today, actually. This is a autonomous vehicle. So everyone's heard of self-driving cars. Students are learning how to build, as well as program, these cars with the sensors. If I flip this around on this side. We've got a distance sensor on the front, optical sensor on the bottom. So students are not only learning how to physically design and build these cars, but they're also getting the experience of coding, programming, and then testing it out like an engineer in the field. One of the strands that you're going to hear about today ties directly into Intro to Engineering and Design. This is a little squirrel that a student designed. We cut out on a machine. So 21st Century Skills, you know, WoodTech is fun. I love teaching the class, but truthfully, this is where our careers are in Brooklyn Park and the regional area. Learning how to run these machines, code these machines, design, and have them fabricated by high-precision machines. This directly ties to the careers and the things that we need here in Brooklyn Park. All right, before I dive into the advanced courses for the construction management pathway, I'm going to invite our first speaker, Aaron Dungy, to come on up. And he's going to tell you about his experience in our foundational courses for construction management.
Hello, everybody. It's a pleasure and honor to speak in front of you all. My name is Aaron Dungy. And when I first came to Minnesota my sophomore year, I knew exactly what I wanted to do with my life. I had a plan for how I was going to do it, and I knew all the resources that were in front of me. Yeah, right. So actually, I was more focused on not getting lost on the hallways and how to join the football team. My counselor sat me down and had me look over the curriculum and classes available for me to take, and mentioned a new class that was available, 21st Century Skills and Trades. She said it was hands-on and would be a nice shift from the usual computer work or writing I'd be doing in my classes. That was enough to sell me. Little did I know the doors and opportunities that would open up from this simple decision. In 21st Century Skills and Trades, I learned how electricity worked, how to wire up an electrical outlet, and the feeling of creating something with my own hands that had meaningful and useful value. This was new. I learned how to cut wood safely to turn into boards for projects, and the precision and patience needed in welding by using the augmented reality gear. A new world opened up for me, and when I learned how these small things we were doing in class could lead to a real career in high school, a faint light bulb was lit in the back of my mind. Fast forward to my junior year, and that was the same... No, no. Fast forward to my junior year, and that same trades career fair flyer that had been sitting on the wall that I'd walked past countless times, barely giving it a second glance, suddenly had real meaning. This time, it wasn't just a piece of paper on the wall. It was a connection to something tangible, a real experience I had lived through and found success in. So a few weeks later, I went. There, I met countless professionals and hiring representatives that were all looking to hire or enlist in their programs. Before this, I had no idea employers were actually looking for high schoolers or people fresh out of school for a good-paying job. At this career fair, I met Ms. Cory Shingles, who's in the crowd, and I asked her about possible opportunities for people who haven't graduated yet. She introduced me to Lake Street Works, which is a 10-month program, which is a 10-month program focused on building both soft and hard skills and propelling students into a career. I also asked our CRC counselor, Ms. Schreiner, a similar question, and she introduced me to GPS Ed, which had internship and paid job opportunities with companies willing to work with high school students. All of a sudden, I was presented with opportunities that allowed me to think beyond just a job. This was different than Taco Bell. It wasn't about a quick paycheck. It was about building something meaningful, something that could lead to a real career. I ended up joining Lake Street Works, which has been a great opportunity to give us networking skills, growing and developing practical skills in the shop. My previous work with our electrical and woodworking projects in the 21st Century Skills and Trade Program even gave me a head start in some of my classes. So, but as I stand here today, I realize that this journey wasn't simply about learning skills. It was about finding direction. The path ahead is clear now, but it wasn't given to me. It was shaped by my own efforts and opportunities placed before me. The support from this course helped me recognize the door that had been quietly waiting. And I'm grateful for that. Opportunity is like a light switch in a dark room, where only once you become conscious of it, can you illuminate what has been in front of you the whole time. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. The intermediate and advanced courses that you see up on the screen here will be for students interested in pursuing a career in construction management. These courses would be offered exclusively at Park Center. So unlike the foundational classes, these ones would be offered exclusively at Park Center. The construction management strand includes college preparatory coursework while offering real-world experiences like team leading, building systems, planning, management, estimating, bidding, budgeting, all the necessary parts of a construction manager's job. Again, these are directions, not necessarily destinations. We won't judge our program on how many construction managers we graduate, right? We want to get students excited about a career like Aaron just illuminated for us and let them find their path and find their way in what excites them for their future. Now I'll turn our attention to our second strand, which is our manufacturing strand. This strand will prepare students for modern manufacturing technologies. Through hands-on learning, students will develop the skills to control machines and robots that create the products we use today. 3D printers, computer numeric-controlled milling and laser machines, robotics and automation. These are the tools of modern manufacturing. Brooklyn Park is a manufacturing hub. According to the Brooklyn Park 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which guides their long-range vision for growth, the manufacturing industry is the biggest industry by employment, 17% in Brooklyn Park. These local partnerships will create opportunities for students close to home. Whether through on-the-job training, technical college, or university, students will have a place in this career field. At this time, I'm going to ask Jack up to the stage. Jack is a student currently enrolled in Intro to Engineering Design and has been a large... Would you call it a participant athlete of robotics? Participant of our robotics team at Park Center. And he's going to tell you how our foundational courses have prepared him for his future.
All right, hello, everyone. My name is Jack Genok. It's an honor to be here. I am a junior at Park Center Senior High and, as Mr. Soder mentioned, part of the robotics team at Park Center. So I'm here to talk about manufacturing, and my journey began in about halfway through seventh grade. I got my first 3D printer purely because I thought it was really cool and interesting. My friends, who, my neighbor friend, had a 3D printer, and I thought it was really cool. So I decided to get one, I got into the hobby, and I started making stuff. And it was amazing to be able to make my own little things. I actually have right here, and I think on the slide? Nope, another one. Oh, okay then. I have my first ever 3D print right here. Just a little figurine that I designed. Yeah, it's really cool to be able to do that. It was just a hobby, though. I didn't get, I did a little bit of designing on the side, but mainly I was doing 3D printing models that were pre-created online. But eventually, I got more into designing for school projects in eighth grade. I started using a software called Tinkercad, that is a very beginner-level design software that I believe many elementary and middle-school-level classes use currently. And I began to do school projects. I also started making projects for robotics. Part intakes for our fall robots that were specifically designed for the game element per that season. But still, it was still very much a hobby at that point. I remember 3D printing a bunch of little figurines that had Dwayne The Rock Johnson's face across them. All sorts of variety. It was quite interesting. But then I took my first CT class at PC in my freshman year. It was Intro to Engineering, or no, Engineering 101. So in the class, we did some programming, some building robots, kind of like Mr. Soder showed earlier, and then some 3D printing. And we got, I got introduced to Fusion 360, which is a more professional software that we use to design parts, which we use in IED currently now. And I got to learn more about CAD and design through that class, which allowed me then to, which helped me make a project after, in the next coming try, I don't think. Is it going to, is it going to show? Yeah, try it really. Does that work? Oh, that's unfortunate.
The one that you need.
The one that I need is the one that isn't showing up. So basically, with the skills, I designed an award pedestal for our robotics team, our competition in Duluth for our winter robotics team, which is actually this weekend. That year, freshman year, we won an award. And so I decided to make a pedestal using 3D printing and 3D design, as well as some programming and electronics, to just kind of honor the team and their progress. And the CT... Is it going to work?
Keep going.
Keep going? Okay. Great, now on to my sophomore year. I did more designing and 3D printing, got further into it with another robotics project and intake. And then along came the IB personal project. For this, since freshman year, I'd always thought about, I've always been interested in 3D printing. Ah.
We got three out of four.
So the second one, the second one is a progress photo from designing... Oh, my goodness. It's okay. Yeah, yeah, it's good. Yeah, so for my personal project, I wanted to do a 3D printer, and I had an idea about it since freshman year, and the IB personal project gave me an opportunity to do so. And all the skills I had learned helped me design and kind of project manage of sort, figuring out how to put it all together. So the printer I designed and made is the one that you cannot see, but it is made from parts from 3D printers and custom-designed pieces put together, and it works pretty well. It's a proof of concept for an idea that I've had. But my, the CTE classes and Park Center classes that I've taken have definitely helped, or fully helped. I wouldn't have been able to make that had I not taken those previous classes. It supported my kind of exploration into that realm. All right, so now for my junior year. Currently, I am in IED, which has been a very fun class. We started off doing some kind of projects, and then we got into some more 3D printing. I learned more skills with Fusion 360. Along, during that time, we also had winter, fall robotics, which, I'm going to direct you guys to this. I spent about two and a half months designing an intake for our robot that would effectively pick up the parts. So for robotics, we have, we play a game, and we have, just have to score these little pieces. This year, it was a little box. So I designed an intake that would pick up the box top-down very automatically and efficiently. And it was product design, for the most part. I got to work out the engineering design process. Over here are all of my iterations that I went through getting to the final product. And all the stuff I've learned at PC in the CTE classes gone through designing, as well as the engineering design process and all the project design, really helped in creating this final product, which won awards and worked very effectively in our competitions. And then comes winter robotics, which is currently the season I'm in right now. Parallel with IED, we started working on the CNC projects, which we learned to manufacture and design using the CNC machine to cut out and trace wood, similar to the squirrel that Mr. Soder presented earlier. And I decided I wanted to take a step forward, and he, with the help of Mr. Soder, we made... I learned how to cut wood, plastic, and metal all for parts for our robot for this year, all of which are currently on the robot and serve a vital purpose, each in their own way, for the functioning of our robot. And I, had I not taken IED class, I would have not have been able to do that in, to the extent that I have. And I'm very, I've learned so much about all the manufacturing, and I'm very passionate about it. It is an amazing skill. And so kind of to recap, I started from 3D printing little trinkets and starting as a hobby to designing and manufacturing technical parts at a high level for a robot that can... It's incredible. All thanks to the CTE programs and all the, just the amazing engineering programs at Park Center. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Good luck this weekend in Duluth, and I hope those parts survive the trip. All right, so the intermediate and advanced coursework, again, this is going to be students at Park Center. So students from across the district invited to come and take these advanced and intermediate and advanced coursework classes So students from across the district invited to come and take these advanced and intermediate and advanced coursework classes to learn about manufacturing, engage in the engineering process, just like you saw Jack demonstrate. We've kind of got two main courses or I guess one main course. And then the capstone and internship is really gonna lean on those work-based learning opportunities, those communities that we can rely on to help our students grow. The computer-integrated manufacturing is a project lead-the-way class, which we have a variety of project lead-the-way classes here in the district. It's a nationally recognized engineering and design course and this one really focuses on manufacturing and would give students the opportunity to learn more and dive deeper into some of the manufacturing things that Jack was talking about. So throughout all of our program and our strands, really at the heart of C T E, what is our focus and what do we really want to do with and for students? C T E, we want to focus on transferable and industry-specific skills. You heard Aaron mention kind of the soft and hard. We want to make sure students understand what is important in the workforce. We want them to have the credentials and the certificates that prove that they are ready, something that they can take directly to an employer, that they can take with them to a technical college or to a university. According to the Minnesota Department of Education, ninety-two percent of students who take two or more C T E classes graduate high school. This means that students enrolled in C T E see the value in their high school education and they complete it. Nearly two-thirds of those same students that take two or more C T E courses enroll in a university or a technical college. So C T E isn't just jobs. These are students that are looking for higher-level education, taking on high-skill, high-wage careers to advance themselves. Finally, in Minnesota, eighty-six percent of post-secondary students completing a C T E program found employment within four months. These careers are high-skill, high-wage and high-need. Alright, so how does this play out? Well, in the fall of twenty twenty-five, we are gonna start informational sessions for students and families to help them learn and understand these pathways and make informed choices during registration. Our goal is to ensure that every student knows the opportunities available to them and how they can align their education with their future goals. Looking ahead after that, we will prepare to launch these programs for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So they will register next winter and then the following school year after that, we would start rolling out these advanced and intermediate courses. Alright, that is it for me. Thank you to the school board for allowing us to present. Thank you to those that are working behind the scenes, our cabinet and everyone that makes these strands and these programs a reality. Thank you to our two student speakers and their families and everyone that was here to support them. We're excited about the future of career and technology education at Park Center and across the district. These programs will give students real skills, real opportunities and a real future. Thank you.
Wow, that was really incredible. Are there board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, actually. I work in construction and we have a lot of manufacturing clients and I, there's such a huge need for this, so it's really amazing to see our district invest in this and see kids find this as a pathway, because construction's such a great industry and there's a lack of workforce, so it's a great fit in this area especially.
Thank you, I just wanted to say excellent public speakers and I love the T-shirts. Is that part of your C T E or is that robotics that say be the leader you would?
That is Park Center in general. Dr. Harris.
Dr. Harris, I love it, I love it. We all need one, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, I think similarly to Director Foster, working for an employer that I know is itching to fill jobs from time to time. And I've even talked about, you know, some of the programming that's happening in our district. I was happy to see the internship program being built and excited to see that, you know, students are already being introduced to these job opportunities to be ready to go, you know, after graduation. So with that, I know I felt really excited and hopeful from this presentation today from all of you. I think one of the questions I had is when you mentioned that this would be promoted to students and families. Is it just Park Center families or will all high schoolers from all schools get access to the same information?
Yeah, so these strands will be kind of published and broadcasted out across the district. Much, much like the Osseos got a pretty solid auto tech and health services, that's similar to how we will publish the information. I believe there are booklets and, yeah, so information is being made and getting ready for fall, which will be here sooner than we can really imagine.
I just have to say, I remember when we kind of first started talking about this was when I was on the board the last time and just to see this kind of in real life and hearing, I mean, Aaron and Jack, you know, your journeys are so, I loved how you described your journey and it really kind of sparked and ignited your passion. And I think that's why we're all here and why we believe in the power of education and opportunity. And so I think it's just excellent and I think that, I'm just grateful for the team at Park Center because just how you explained of how these came to be, just the thoughtfulness behind that and looking kind of at the future and to position our scholars to be, you know, have every opportunity. And so this is very, very exciting and I'm just, I'm excited as you roll this out.
Yeah, I loved the hands-on, minds-on learning and I think just being able to demonstrate what this industry is like at this point in time. I think, I think maybe sometimes still, people still have an outdated image around the program and about the industry. It really is like so high-tech now and that integration of the hands-on with that advanced skill set in design, in robotics. Just, this is gonna position our students so well for their futures as we saw and just evidenced in the way that you guys spoke and communicated. This, you're just exemplary for Park Center. And I know Dr. Harris is creating all sorts of incredible change over there, so thank you. I know this is just one fantastic thing happening at Park Center.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, I love it, oh my gosh.
Thank you.
And it's a lot, what are they called? They're called something.
Oxalate.
Oxalate, that's it.
That's fun.
So cool.
Thank you so much.
Oh my gosh, we never get this, wow. My god. You have a bright future.
Thank you again, that was just outstanding. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is concurrence with the American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. Ethan Nirdales, Coordinator of Indian Education, will you come on up to the podium to lead off the presentation and introductions?
Sure. Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Ethan Nirdales. I'm here tonight on behalf of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee to present our resolution vote of concurrence for Osseo Area Schools. As you know, Minnesota Statute one twenty-four D seventy-eight requires districts with ten or more American Indian students or within fifty miles of an Indian reservation to establish an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee or A P A C. This committee ensures that the district is meeting the needs of American Indian students and families, aligning with the American Indian Education Aid Program Plan submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education. Each year, the A P A C reviews district data and determines whether to issue a vote of concurrence or non-concurrence based on progress towards program goals. This is an important accountability measure, ensuring that our American Indian students receive equitable educational opportunities and culturally relevant programming. I am pleased to report that the A P A C has issued a vote of concurrence for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This decision was made February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, following a thorough review of district data, student outcomes and progress towards the six key program goals outlined in our approved American Indian Education Aid Plan. The committee formally presents this resolution to the school board tonight, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. In closing, the A P A C recognizes and appreciates the district's efforts in advancing academic success, cultural inclusion and student support for American Indian students. By issuing a vote of concurrence, we affirm that the district is on track to meeting its commitments outlined in the American Indian Education Aid Program Plan. However, we see opportunities to build on this progress using elements from the American Indian Strategic Plan created by the Indian Education Department. These include implementing culturally responsive multi-tiered support systems for American Indian students, developing stronger intervention models, increasing access to native student tutoring services, additionally embedding indigenous perspectives across all subject areas, enhancing land-based learning opportunities and experiences and integrating native storytelling and oral traditions into literacy programs. In addition to that, expanding culture-based social emotional learning supports and further integrating traditional Da'akota and Ojibwe values into school-wide initiatives, expanding mandatory cultural competency training for all district staff and developing indigenous-centered curriculum for all students, fostering stronger partnerships with local tribal nations. This clearly aligns with the statutory requirement of indigenous education for all at M D E. Additionally, ensuring long-term funding for native language programming, specifically Ojibwe and Da'akota language, increasing indigenous-based extracurricular activities and expanding culturally relevant mental health resources. Lastly, it is also important to recognize the role of the Minnesota School Trust Lands Fund in funding I S D two seven nine. Each year, Osseo Area Schools receives over one point four million dollars annually to the general fund from the Minnesota Department of Ed School Trust Lands Fund. This revenue is derived from mineral and timber assets on indigenous lands. While these funds contribute to the district's overall budget, we emphasize the need for increased transparency and accountability in ensuring American Indian students receive direct benefits from resources generated by lands that are stewarded by indigenous peoples. We thank the school board for your ongoing support and look forward to continuing our work together to ensure equitable and culturally affirming educational experiences for all American Indian students. Thank you.
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I just, I mean, I'm just pleased to hear that and I know that, I know Dr. Heil and your leadership, this is, excuse me, an Indian and an American Indian students are, is, you know, a high priority and in terms of just kind of standing in the gap like you talked about and building upon kind of that strong foundation. And I know for me as the board member that's the liaison with A P A C, I'm really excited to to be engaged and to just have a stronger connection, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing with us tonight and I know we've had, recently had the language spotlight at a board meeting and we often have updates in our work sessions. So as you said, there's still always work to be done and improvements to be made. And I think I can speak on behalf of the board that we're continue to be committed to the ongoing improvements that you mentioned.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item are the student school board representatives reports. Reason, would you please share your report?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reason Atkins, representing two seven nine online. I'm sure that you guys probably missed out on hearing on how two seven nine has been doing these past two months, but we have been doing well. And it's okay because I am back to lay down another report once again. We recently had our elementary activity night hosted on the twenty-second of January with arts and crafts, including a Lego room and a star, a star lab, I'm not sure what that is. Our secondary registration night was the thirtieth and our secondary activity night will be held on March seventh with similar activities that are like more suitable for scholars their age. Our student leadership team has been working a lot. Our staff member, Miss Nanbonaral, and a student named Brooke have been doing extra work to make sure that our online community is getting delivered a good amount of information on upcoming events and other interactive activities and opportunities, so shout out to them. Our counselors have been doing a great job with pushing out scholarship opportunities and informations on how to apply as well, including information on our upcoming commencement ceremony that is being held on later this year. And other than that, our staff members have been doing a great job allowing their students to take it easy into the next trimester, giving them all the time, resources and availability that they need. And that is all I have for you guys, thank you.
Thank you. Gavin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gavin Chibika and I'm honored and thrilled to represent Maple Grove Senior High School tonight. First off, I want to give a lower sport, a report on all the sports going on at Maple Grove. Our boys' basketball team is looking strong heading into the section tournament. Our girls' basketball team is on fire, they're insane. They're ranked first in class four A and they're looking like a top contender for the state championship. Our boys' hockey team just wrapped up a fantastic season with an impressive sixteen and ten record. Our girls' hockey team had another stellar season, finishing seventeen and eight. Wrestling, we had a, one of our wrestlers break the school record, Ben Schultz, so a big shout out to him. Additionally, four of our wrestlers are headed to state. We also have had a girls' wrestling team this past winter and we've made history with eight wrestlers in the program and our first ever state qualifier freshman Steven, C C Stevenson. Our most decorated team across all programs is our dance team and they have showed out yet, once again, coming in second, in second at state. Our competitive cheer team went to Florida and the game day team finished third and varsity finished seventh in Nationals. Our Nordic ski team, or both of our Nordic ski teams did really well. The boys took first in conference and our girls came in third, both of them going to state. And then our boys swim dive team is looking great going into their section tournament this weekend. As for clubs, M A L D U N has their McAllister Spring Conference this Friday. H O S A is preparing for upcoming events. Our DECA members are tirelessly preparing for their state conference this Sunday. And our N H S had a blast this January with putting on snow days. Our robotics team will be joining Jack in Duluth this Thursday and Friday. And we're proud to announce that seven Maple Grove students were recognized for their artistic talents, with Cat Beers being one of the five from the whole state of Minnesota to take home the American Vision and Nominee Award. And with the end of the try looking a little too close for comfort, students are taking, cramming and doing anything they can to finish well. And with the really good weather we've had, I hope that ends up happening. I'd also like to talk about some policies and updates that both students and teachers would love to see implemented across our schools. First up, I'd like to give a report on the phone policy. It seems to be still doing well. Students are staying really productive in and out of school and I think the phone policy is a major, major contributor to this. I also recently attended the DECA District Conference last month and I had the opportunity to see and meet so many, so many other students from other districts and learn about all the resources and support systems that their schools provide. So basically just I had some thoughts on what we should implement as a district. First up, we have a fantastic writing center. I believe at all the schools in the district and I'm proud to be one of the tutors helping students with their writing. However, I've noticed that we don't have a similar resource for math, especially as that being a major struggle point for a lot of students. And we only have tutoring up until, I believe, Algebra II. So providing a math center for students would be a great thing to implement, especially with material up to, I'd say calculus, if not farther. And just creating a space where students can ask questions, get tutoring and build confidence in their math skills. Also, it has been an ongoing discussion among teachers and students alike that the grading system needs a change and/or some sort of improvement. Many students feel our grading system does not accurately reflect student success. Well, many teachers feel as though it is an obstacle both in teaching and overcomplicating their work. Lastly, I'd like to propose incorporating LinkedIn education into our curriculum. We already have resume work and interview skills, or we do mock interviews within our English classes. So whether it's foundations, English classes, social studies, providing some sort of LinkedIn education and getting our students educated in that department because it is sort of the new way that careers are built. Getting them some sort of education, I think, is something that is very much needed. In addition to just general foundations, for the general foundations curriculum, just providing more practical skills that, we recently had a module detailing how to build credit and I think that was great. It was, a lot of students enjoyed learning about it and just having more stuff like that with building practical soft skills. And it doesn't even have to be just something you can apply to a job, it could also be just psychological things. But creating more learning learning opportunities within our foundations that are like ready to apply for life, I think is very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Reason and Gavin. So, board members, the student representatives reviewed the board meeting packet in advance and are prepared to answer any question for the, from the board members on issues to seek student input related to agenda items or anything that they shared as well. You may, I know I have some thoughts. So, board members, do you have any agenda items or questions for the student school board reps?
It's fun to hear Gavin, from your mouth, as a student, that the cell phone policy has been, made you more productive. Can you just tell us a little bit more about that, how your day has changed for your fellow students?
I mean, yeah, in class, I'd say students are much more productive. They, I, I've noticed a lot of people say they're enjoying the subject material that they're learning, which is something last year, we were like, oh, it's such a drag, all this stuff. And now it's kind of, people are really engaging in the stuff they're learning and thinking more about what they're gonna be able to be doing in college and in their prospective careers and how these different things they're learning in school will help them. So I think just getting people off their phones and getting them more engaged in class has really been a big success at our school.
It's fun to hear, almost a protective barrier, it's from, protect you from yourselves. So, thank you, it's fun to hear from a student's perspective. Thank you, Gavin.
Do you have a question? So the LinkedIn learning that you're talking about, you're talking about the courses that are available on LinkedIn that you can take and get, they pop up on your?
I'm more speaking on getting students accustomed with how LinkedIn works and how getting their accounts set up.
Sure.
I'm aware of Minnetonka High School in their district and Wayzata District, both have programs that allow students to do that. So they're very educated in that, going into college and going into their prospective careers, which is something that our district doesn't have, and I feel like it's kind of sets us back compared to them. So I think that's something that really needs to be brought into our curriculum.
I was curious if there's anything more you wanted to expound on related to the grading system, like with, is it the complexity of the standards based, is it like the actual kind of assessments?
Um, I not, right, I, so I've, I've been meeting with some teachers and like hearing their complaints about it. I do have one teacher that ran a whole study about it, so I could bring that to you next meeting. However, basically, just, why not As and Bs is what I've heard from almost every teacher is, why aren't we just using simple A, B, C, 90 and above is an A, 80 to 90 is a B, that sort of thing, instead of having this different system, which is different from almost every other high school that we've seen across districts and colleges oftentimes don't know what to make of our GPA because it's so different from every other schools and how that works. In addition, our AP classes and advanced courses do not provide much weight in terms of GPA, so there's not much incentive to take them and try to go further with your education.
Thank you.
I have a lot of questions, but I, I'll save them. I think I just, I want to say thank you for, like, that information that you added at the end is, I think, what we really need. And even more than just hearing it from you, I think we need spaces where we're either having these conversations or you all the students are having these conversations to create these programs. But yeah, I just want to say thank you for the additional thought that went into this report today and actually bringing back some information that I think we can hopefully actually do something with, so. I'll save the other questions, but thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Student reps are excused at this time. Thank you so much. All right, our next agenda item is the audience opportunity to address the board, and we have quite a number of speakers tonight, and so I'm gonna share some comments regarding our public comment, our opportunity to address the board. As a board, we welcome all voices and strive for public engagement and transparency in our board work. Public comment or audience opportunity to address the board is one of many avenues to achieve this. Speakers will be called to the podium in this order: student, parent, staff member, community member, and others. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Comments should be directed to the entire board, not any one individual board member. If you have a handout for the board, please place it on the information table or hand it to the board secretary, Sheri. The board secretary will provide copies to the board members. The board and audience will listen and not respond back at this time. If you would like someone to follow up with you on your question and or comments, please let the board secretary know, and of course, if anything is raised in public comment that needs to be addressed, we always, the appropriate staff members take action. Personal concerns should be direct, personnel concerns should be directed to individuals in the following order: building principal, executive director for human resources, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and finally, in writing to the school board. The complete guidelines for public participation are provided on the meeting materials table and on the school board section of the district website. We do ask out of respect for all speakers and their perspectives that we withhold, that the audience withhold from any cheering or applause, just out of respect for everybody. When I call your name, please come to the microphone and state your name and topic and whether or not you are a district resident. We're gonna start with the Schroeder family. So, several family members, go ahead and come up and share your name, and you'll have your time allotted.
I don't have a camera.
For the kids.
Wasn't that tall enough?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Chris, and I'm a proud parent of Dana and Thielen, two students at 279 Online. For them, the, the school, it, it isn't just a preference, it's the only place where they feel safe, supported, and have the ability to learn in a way that truly works for them. When they learned that their school was closing, they begged for the chance to speak, to share in their own words what 279 Online means to them. They spent weeks carefully preparing their thoughts and hoping that somebody would listen. So tonight, I ask for your grace and your patience as you give them the time and opportunity to be seen and heard.
Hello, my name is Dana, I'm a sergeant grader at 279 Online.
They can come out.
Yeah, so we can see them.
Hello, my name is Dana, I'm a sergeant grader at 279 Online.
Hello, my name is Thielen, I'm a kindergarten at 279 Online. People used to tell me that I have too much energy and to sit down, but at 279 Online, people don't say that anymore. I can alter the energy out and still learn.
I love learning online, sometimes I feel really shy and I'm really nervous about bullies and other bad things happening. My anxiety makes it hard for me to focus, but at 279 Online, I feel safe and when I feel safe online, please don't make me do in-person school.
I, I love 279 Online because I get to eat spring cheese with my, with Aleah and play cards with Demon and Jacob and read stories with Ms. Lawson and play bowling and gym class.
I love 279, I love 279 Online because the teachers are amazing, the musicals are my favorite. Actually, it was hard for me to make friends, but at 279 Online, I have made so many, and I feel safe being myself, and I'm not afraid to make mistakes and I can focus without distractions.
Oh, I love Lady Island too.
Please think about students adjusting all the other students you're impacting when you did, whether to close our school. There is no online school where you can be with teachers and friends all day like we can here. I don't want to have to learn alone. You're taking away what I need to learn. We love 279 Online.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. We had Jennifer? Yeah, yeah, oh, you can.
Good evening, members of the school board, administrators, and community members. My name is Kira Kisek, I'm a teacher at 279 Online, and I'm a community member.
My name is Jennifer Schroeder. I stand here today with many of my colleagues to speak about the recent closure of 279 Elementary. I'm both a teacher and parent of 279 Online. When I heard about this closure three weeks ago, I was shocked. No discussion, no warning, no input from the families and staff directly impacted. When I told my daughter the news, she looked at me with tearful eyes and asked one question: who decided I wasn't good enough? That question didn't just break my heart, it demanded an answer. For weeks, I have sought that answer, speaking with my principals, fellow staff members, board members, cabinet members, lawyers, and even the Minnesota Department of Education. What I uncovered is deeply troubling. The district claims this isn't a closure, but it's a reconfiguration, a convenient loophole used to bypass Minnesota statute 123.51 and school report policy and procedure 727. Your justification? Well, it's an online school, and some grade levels will remain open. But according to the Minnesota Department of Education, this is simply untrue. 279 Online receives separate funding for elementary and secondary students, finding that classifies them as two distinct schools and definitely not a program. The law currently does make no distinction between online and physical schools. By exploiting a legal gray area, the district is evading responsibility. But is this the precedent we want to set? One where definitions are twisted to avoid accountability? One where families can be blindsided by the very district they trusted with their innocent children? Because let's be clear, a school can't be closed without a public hearing, a school can't be closed without a school board vote, and a school can't be, and just shouldn't be, closed without input from the people it serves. Yet, here we are. If a district disregards policy and makes decisions in secret, what recourse do parents have? Who holds them accountable? The reality is, unless the school board steps in, a district can violate these policies or any other policies without consequence. I've learned the only way to fight back is to hire a lawyer and take them to court. Is that the kind of system we are willing to accept? One where justice depends on who can afford it? At a recent district equity meeting I attended, the leader quoted Ricardo Morales stating, quote, "Nothing about us, without us, is for us," end quote. But this decision was made without us, and anyone who believes that it was made for us is lying to themselves. As a teacher for 279 Online, I have spent years advocating for the unique needs of our school, yet I have never felt seen or heard. We have been held down while we begged and pleaded to be recognized and understood in a way beyond financials. As I know I am not alone in this feeling, I urge you to listen to our staff and students, not to defend past decisions or justify what you believe this program was supported. It is a fact that 279 has, online, has not been given what it needs to thrive. Some board members said that the writing has been on the wall for this school, but I ask, who put that writing there? Over the past three weeks, I have searched for other online options for my children, and I can say with certainty, there is a need for a fully synchronous online elementary school. Family after family has voiced concerns, looking for an option exactly like the one we are closing, an option that they simply didn't know was out there. And that raises a critical equity concern. During an interview with CCX Media, this district quoted, "279 Online was built to give a pathway to students for whom brick and mortar does not work," end quote. The district acknowledges that for some students, 279 Online is their only viable option, and yet they are taking that option away without a plan for those left behind. These scholars cannot simply be bussed to the next closest school, which are given less time than other schools prepare anyway, but their education, their stability, and their success depend on an option that is now disappearing without care, without warning, and without a transition plan. So I ask, what efforts were made to understand the needs of these students before making this decision? What guarantees do we have that every scholar will still have access to the education they need? And when did our district decide that a scholar's education is only worth protecting if they contribute to the bottom line? We have recently passed multiple referendums promising that funds would support all students. So how do we justify closing a school that serves some of our most vulnerable scholars? Who gets to decide which scholars are worth the investment? We cannot preach equity while practicing exclusion. Some may say it's just a few scholars, but I ask, how many scholars must be impacted before you're willing to care? This isn't just about the elementary families losing their school, this decision affects everyone in this district. Because if leadership can override policy and silence stakeholders today, what stops them from doing it again tomorrow? What precedent does this set for the next decision and the one after that? I was advised not to speak out tonight, that it would just stir up anger rather than create change. But I believe in this district, I believe in our school board, in the cabinet members, and in this community. Mistakes happen, oversights occur, but real leadership needs course correcting when an injustice is exposed. Tonight, I beg you, will you stand for equity, transparency, and the scholars you vowed to serve? 279 Online Elementary deserves to thrive. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Brenner.
School or members and Superintendent Heil? On Friday last week, I read a news report that former Basswood Elementary teacher was charged with four counts of criminal sexual conduct towards fifth graders from September 2022 to June 2023. As a parent of two elementary students and two more on their way to elementary school, I was shocked, disgusted, and saddened to hear of this report. Furthermore, the report detailed a statement from our school district that, quote, "There was only one complaint about the teacher that did not result in disciplinary action," unquote, and, quote, "The teacher previously received two verbal warnings for touching of female students," unquote. What has been unclear after subsequent news reports have been made was the district's response to the complaint against the teacher. In one report, it was reported that the response was no disciplinary action. In another report, it was reported that authorities and the Department of Education were notified. What is clear is that two verbal warnings were made, and our school district failed to act to protect these students. Altogether, this is a shamed failure of our school district. My hope is that steps will be taken by the school board and the school district to ensure transparency to the families of our district concerning these charges and the district's failure to prevent and protect students. Several questions that have come to my mind could guide this. One, how was a complaint of this nature not followed by swift disciplinary action by our district? Were students and parents heard by the district as this complaint was made? Two, how was more than one verbal warning made without our school district acting to protect students and alert authorities? Three, how were families in the district not made abundantly aware of the situation Seeing as how it's 2025. What, four, what district policies govern complaints and verbal warnings? What errors have been made in writing and enforcing of those policies within the school district? Number five, would this criminal sexual conduct have continued had a student not spoken up? We should be thankful that the students did speak up, but we should not be satisfied when it, when it only stops when a minor speaks up. Lastly, from my estimation, the time period involved in the charges has occurred during a period where our district has had a lack of focus on education and safety of all students in our district. My opinion is the school district has chosen to focus on the viewpoint of activist groups over the education and safety needs of all students and families in our district. Hopefully, this terrible failure is a wake-up call to the district to work quickly and transparently toward creating a safer environment of schools where quality education is provided to all students. I think an encouragement is that I work in an FDA-regulated environment, and it is possible to eliminate failures, to protect people through proper policy, training, and enforcement. And if it's possible there, then we should be focused daily on that happening in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Nick Wattler.
Good evening. Coming here basically to speak to the school board today just to raise awareness for the ESPs in the district that are currently going to contract negotiations. And while I know a lot of that is behind closed doors and not always, you know, fully open to everybody on the school board unless you're part of those negotiations, I think it is good to bring awareness that their COLAs and other pay has been lacking behind where the rest of the districts are in the state, and also the fact that, right now, I think what they're asking for is just above the federal poverty guidelines right now. And currently, all the ESPs, as they're starting, are below that. And so, just coming here tonight to raise awareness to you guys and bring support to that aspect, and hopefully, we can get a little more traction going forward with that and get that put through before, obviously, the, uh, everything keeps going up in price. So hopefully, we can get that contract negotiation done moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Tina Collins.
Hello, esteemed board members, fellow district employees, and members of our beautiful community. I've talked a few times up here, and this is pretty much a little bit of the same speech, but little changes. My name is Tina Collins, and I have been an ESP in the Oseo district since two thousand and eight. Over the years, I have held many different positions. I've been at my current site for fifteen great years. Through the years, my employment with the district has become not so much of a job, but a passion. I have been entrusted with the care and safety of over two thousand students in my years with the district. I take my duties very seriously. I am a recess ESP, and I'm one of the lowest-paid ESPs in the district. I am one of two adults designated to keep a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty children safe on an open playground, ten yards from swampy areas, ten yards from open wooded areas, and about a thousand yards from two major roadways. The actual play areas consist of a large open field, about two football fields in length and width, two large climbing structures with multiple slides, two gaga pits. If you don't know what a gaga pit is, it's something. And four new, um, sport, four new golf sport court. This play area also has many swings and spinners. Sometimes, we may have a third adult with us, but this is never a guarantee, depending on what's going on in the school and on the grounds at the time. Not only are we supposed to keep all of our kids safe, but we frequently have to let them in to use the restrooms because the doors are locked, get hats, gloves, or even jackets that they forgot, continuously help them solve problems or conflicts that occur, help them learn compassion, sharing, taking turns, kindness, fairness, how to be a friend, and a lot of times, simply how to make a friend. We are also on-the-spot nurses. We wipe tears, bandage owies, and comfort everyone who is either hurt physically or emotionally. We are overwhelmed and understaffed. And while we do all of the above, we still have to keep an eye on all of the other children outside. We are also expected to build meaningful and trusting relationships with all of the children in our care so that they can feel safe and nurtured. Yet, we are not considered as instructional ESPs. Personally, I give everything I have in me to my job as an ESP, no matter what my role is, in keeping our kids safe. Our administrators on-site do the very best that they can, but they too are overwhelmed with responsibilities that we are all entrusted with. My story is just one of hundreds just like it across our district. We need funding in our district to pay a livable wage at step one. We actually know of some instances where new staff is being hired at step two or even step three rates because our new hires will not accept the low pay that Class One is currently at. We need to offer believable wages if we are going to hire qualified and committed ESP staff, and especially to retain all of us that truly care so much for our community's children.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tracy Dorn.
Hello, my name is Tracy Dorn. I'm a parent of two Maple Grove graduates, and my youngest is currently a senior at Maple Grove. I'm also an academic intervention ESP at Oakview Elementary, and I'm here to tell you a story. This is my daughter Abby, back in two thousand and twenty-two, graduating from Maple Grove. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that's the back of Dr. Bart Mecker's head. This is a picture of Abby this past January in Costa Rica. Abby is a junior in college at Carroll University in Waukesha, Wisconsin, and recently spent an amazing two weeks in Costa Rica for a cross-cultural immersion class. This was an opportunity that I highly encouraged her to grab hold of because it's one that I, that, uh, but it's one that obviously came with a price, a price that my husband and I were not able to help with. So Abby worked hard this past summer to save up the four thousand dollars to pay for her trip to Costa Rica. She worked three different jobs, one of which was a sub for KidStop. But the most lucrative of those jobs was when she worked as an ambassador for Target at the USA Cup Soccer Tournament in Blaine. Target is a tournament sponsor and set up an area with lots of fun activities for players and families to take part in, along with samples. Abby's job was to hand out samples and to get the kids who came and to visit engaged in the activities. There's actually two tournaments at the USA Cup, a short weekend tournament, followed by a longer week-long tournament. Because of Abby's two other jobs, she was only able to work the shorter weekend tournament, meaning that she was hired for exactly three days. As her employer, Target did not need to keep her happy to retain her as an employee. They did not need to show her respect. They did not need to honor her dedication. She was only there for three days after all. They simply had to pay her a wage that they thought she was worth. Let me add that Abby had never done anything like this before. She had no prior experience. Abby was paid twenty-five dollars an hour. Twenty-five dollars an hour. A wage that it took me ten years working for this district to reach. A wage that is currently in discussion as a minimum wage for ESPs in the Minnesota State Legislature as part of the ESP Bill of Rights. As ESPs, we believe the ESP Bill of Rights will pass. We are asking for you to respect our work, honor our dedication. Twenty-five dollars an hour is not too much to ask. We are worth it.
Time. Thank you. Michelle Denard.
Good evening, esteemed board members, cabinet members, Dr. Howell, fellow district employees, and members of our community. My name is Michelle Denard, and I am a special education vocational trainer, education support professional. And I want you to know, this is not about the district. This is about Oseo's education support professionals. And that is exactly who we are, professionals. Our work is the foundation of academic success. We serve with passion, expertise, and unwavering dedication to our students. Now is the time for the district to match our, our commitment with action. We want Oseo to be the district of choice for ESPs, a place where people want to work, stay, and build long-term careers. A district that values us not just with words, but with wages and benefits that reflect our worth. Twenty-five dollars an hour is not too much to ask. It's an investment in us. Choose to be the district that leads with integrity, courage, and vision. Choose to change what isn't working. Together, we can create a turning point, a moment where the district proves that ESPs are the backbone of our schools. As we advocate for fair wages and equity, let's reflect on the district's own core values. Honor and integrity. Are we holding ourselves to the highest standards when ESPs cannot earn a livable wage? Belonging. Are we fostering a sense of belonging when many of us are forced to consider leaving Oseo for better pay? Inclusion. Are we truly valuing the diverse voices of ESPs who dedicate themselves daily to our scholars? Innovation and excellence. How can we cultivate excellence when our pay hinders professional growth and retention? Transparency. Will the district present real financial proposals in dollar amounts that prove its commitment to change intrinsic value? Do you truly value us if our contributions aren't reflected in our compensation? We are not asking for anything that doesn't align with these values. We are asking to lead with integrity, transparency, and equity to make Oseo the district of choice for ESPs. Let's turn these values into meaningful action, and remember, what you are not changing, you are choosing. The time to act is now. Twenty-five dollars an hour is not too much to ask because we are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker, Kendra Coleman.
Good evening, school board members, superintendent Dr. Howell, cabinet members, community members, fellow district employees. My name is Kendra. I am a housing stability social worker for the district. I run our Homework Starts With Home program. It is a grant-funded program in partnership with the county and the YMCA, a program that assists our families in our district who have fallen behind in their rent. So we help to pay their back rent, avoid eviction, provide case management services for families. If you would like for me to come back at a different time to explain more about the program, I am happy to do that. I did give you some information cards. But I'm here to talk about the ESP contract today. And so I also gave you a handout, so it was mentioned before about the federal property guidelines. So the program that I run, Homework Starts With Home, we follow the Hennepin County Area Median Income Guidelines. And so if you look at the first line, thirty percent AMI, we follow that guideline. So families, let's say, for example, the highlighted middle column, a family of four who has a total income of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty, if a family is falling below that, they would income-qualify for our program. And sadly, I've had fellow colleagues, ESPs, in our district who have qualified for our program. And so I would just highly encourage you to keep this in mind when you are looking at contract negotiations, not only for our ESPs, but I've also had AAs who have also income-qualified for our program. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker, Steph Larson. Steph here. Okay. The next speaker, Woodrow Piner.
Chair, board members, grateful to be here tonight. First and foremost, my name is Woodrow Piner. I'm here as a constituent and taxpayer, ISD two seventy-nine. I'm also currently employed by the North Central States Regional Council of Carpenters, and I've been there for ten years. One of my key roles there is serving as a lead on labor exploitation task force that collaborates with enforcement agencies on cases where men and women are being exploited and contractors are operating outside of the law to gain a competitive advantage over law-abiding union and non-union contractors. This is what brings me here tonight. Our office was recently made aware that Ebert Construction was awarded one of the upcoming elementary school projects in this district. Typically, this kind of information isn't shared at a school board meeting because contractors, like the one I'm about to discuss, doesn't end up on school projects. Last year, Ebert Construction was involved with school projects in Rogers and Orno, and Absolute Drywall Incorporated ended up as a drywall subcontractor on both of these. In the past, Ebert had hired Absolute on wood frame apartment buildings, but never a school project. Absolute Drywall has a history of multiple state, federal citations for labor violations, including employing a fourteen-year-old to work more than fifty hours a week. Two years ago, a brave woman by the name of Norma Izagara came forward about a sexual assault that happened on a construction site in Eagan, working for Absolute Drywall. Izagara was hired by Absolute to clean up after the other workers finished hanging drywall, hauling out garbage, and sweeping up dust. It was one of the lowest-paying jobs on the site, but Izagara saw it as an opportunity to work with a large company and to pay her bills. Shortly after she started, another employee for Absolute, Diego Caceres Medina, started making unwanted advances towards her. Despite trying to avoid Medina, he eventually cornered her and sexually assaulted her in one of the unfinished unit showers. Upon the horrific incident, Izagara reported the incident to a supervisor for Absolute. The complaint was ignored, and she was fired for creating a toxic workplace. When company leadership from Absolute was questioned by the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, they responded with it was a consensual relationship that turned sour. Fast forward to February thirteenth of this year, at a hearing at the Dakota County Government Center, Medina pled guilty to felony sexual misconduct in the criminal court hearing. Izagara has already filed a complaint against the contractor with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. There have been a request for lists of projects that Absolute has performed, and two of the prior school districts are on those. As elected school board members, all of you have stepped up to take on difficult tasks for one of the most reputable school districts in Minnesota. Fiduciary responsibility for constituents who you elected is very important. Picking low numbers on contractors that perform work on school project is understood and part of the fiscal responsibility. Norma could have taken a settlement from Absolute out of court and started over. She took the hard road, and, and she went this way. I ask you to not to take the low number if it's Absolute Drywall. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, the final speaker we have tonight, Cindy Devonish. Is Cindy here?
Good evening, esteemed school board members and community members. It's a pleasure to be with all of you tonight. My name is Cindy Devonish. I am proud to introduce myself as a new community engagement experience manager for the city of Brooklyn Park. It's a pleasure, pleasure to be with all of you tonight. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication. Um, I'm here to, uh, tonight to share updates, resources, and supports, and opportunities for our community members. I have brought items that are placed on the table over there. And they're also available on our website, brooklynpark.org. First and foremost is our seven-hundred-acre project for the Northwest Growth Area. I encourage everyone to participate in shaping this vision. So we look forward to your response. It is a QR code, and it is also available online. And once again, your input is needed. Also, I brought in resources for Spanish-speaking, uh, community members, frequently asked questions regarding citizenship statutes in Brooklyn Park, including green card holders, work visas, et cetera. This information is also available on our website in various languages as well. These documents are available, I'm sorry, they are targeted to amplify awareness. I also brought bread cards. These come from various community organizations. You might have seen them in the community. One side is Spanish, one side is English. And what they do is they just state constitutional rights regarding deportation and birthright status. There is a lot of confusion, a lot of fear in the community, so this helps hopefully address some of those concerns and fears. If anyone else is interested in being involved with the city of Brooklyn Park as a community engagement experience manager, I look forward to interacting with you. My work cell number is six one two. Uh, my per- my work cell number is six-one-two-nine-four-six-nine-four-zero-one. Again, my name is Cindy Devonish. I'm here on behalf of the city of Brooklyn Park as a community engagement experience manager, and my number is six-one-two-nine-four-six-nine-four-zero-one. And I did leave some of my business cards as well. Thank you, and it was a privilege to be here, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we got everybody. Was anybody missed? Okay, thank you everyone for your um participation in the audience opportunity to address the school board. We are now gonna move on to our next agenda item, the superintendent's report. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Prince, Vice Chair Brooks, and school board members. As we gather here tonight, we are presented with a significant period of change and transformation across our district. There are several key initiatives that we are preparing to implement in the coming months, each designed to improve our schools and better serve our scholars. These initiatives include addressing site capacities, undertaking renovations at various school sites, placing new furniture to enhance learning environments, and revisiting attendance boundaries. We recognize that these changes pose challenges, and we understand the potential impact they have or may have on our students, families, staff, and all of our stakeholders. However, please know that we are deeply committed to stay in focus on our work to build a better future for our scholars and our community. Tonight, I specifically want to provide an update on our attendance boundary process. As shared in a connect and insider newsletter this week, we were grateful to receive feedback from a few thousand community members on our first four proposed attendance boundary scenarios via community meetings, an online forum, and hotlines. This feedback is now being reviewed and helping to narrow the number of scenarios and make and make tweaks to those as we move forward. These updated scenarios are expected to be presented online this Friday, February twenty-eighth. This will begin the final round of community feedback. Once we, the updated scenarios are released, community members are once again to share their voice and their thoughts on the updated scenarios. It's very important for you to share your voice during this time, as it would help our team make any potential adjustments. A new online feedback forum, as well as a forum to RSVP for two community informational meetings, will also be made available at districttwosevennine.org slash boundaries as soon as the scenarios are available. Tuesday, March fourth will be our community informational meeting for round two. The March fourth meeting will take place at five forty-five at Northview Middle School. Wednesday, March nineteenth will be the final community informational meeting for this process, and this will take place at five forty-five at OCEO Middle School. And the feedback forum will close on Friday, March twenty-first. The school board is expected to approve final attendance boundary changes in May, and the new attendance boundaries once again will go into effect of fall of twenty-twenty-six. Again, please take advantage of these feedback opportunities. Your voices are important. A regular part of our superintendent's report, as well as our share, we share points of pride in our district. By sharing our points of pride, we're taking time to recognize and celebrate the scholar, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission. I have members of our district cabinet here to assist in sharing some examples from last month, please.
In the area of achieving dreams, each February, schools and students across the district about people or events that have impacted Black culture in our country's history during Black History Month. To kick the month off, students, staff, and community members gathered at Park Center Senior High School on February first for the Family and Community Engagement, also known as FACE, Black History Month Celebration. This event was organized by the dedicated FACE staff members and students from the Park Center and OCEO Senior High Black Student Unions. The event included a meal, booths from BIPOC businesses, organizations, and a number of performances. The OCEO Education Center spent February celebrating Black History Month with a variety of events. Students gathered for an all-school movie to watch the Six Triple Eight movie, based on the true story of an all-black, all-female battalion during World War II. Students also celebrated Black History Month with a soul food sampling, tasting foods such as fried chicken, candied yams, cornbread, mac and cheese, greens with smoked turkey, sweet potato pie, and peach cobbler. They also visited a Minnesota African-American Heritage Museum and Gallery multiple times throughout the month. On February twenty-fourth, just last night, students in the Black Student Union at OCEO Senior High School hosted the eighth annual OCEO Speaks, a Black History Month showcase. The event, held in a packed auditorium, included dance performances, poems, spoken words, a drum performance, singing, skits, and a fashion show. It was fabulous, and if you ever have an opportunity to go, you should be sure to attend. Recognized for the second Monday in February each year, National African-American Parent Involvement Day celebrates the critical partnerships between African-American families and schools. Around OCEO-area schools, several elementary schools marked the occasion with opportunities to gather, strengthen community, and share information with students. Congratulations to the district students who put their hard work and creativity on display by submitting their work to the Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards. Works are submitted from high schools throughout Minnesota each year. The art is submitted in sixteen different categories: ceramics, drawing, photography, painting, sculpture, portfolio, fashion, printmaking, design, film, mixed media, jewelry, digital art, expanded projects, comic art, editorial cartoon, and architecture. The joyful sounds of young musicians filled the air as fifth-grade band and orchestra students took the stage these last few weeks at OCEO Middle School to perform concerts showcasing their hard work and budding musical talents. Students at OCEO Middle School recently competed in the Minnesota Junior High Math League, which enables students to meet mathletes from other schools and provides recognition for students excelling in mathematics. After competing in five meets and getting first place in two of them, the OCEO Middle School math team placed third overall at the competition for the twenty-twenty-four-twenty-five school year, with twelve other teams participating in the event. OCEO Middle School student Parker Lincoln was first overall in the individual rounds, and Drew Erickson was third, and Sean Williams placed in the top ten.
Congratulations to Maple Grove Senior High School student Jacob Rabanik, who was named the Region Five double A, Triple A Award finalist. Each school in the state nominates one male and one female student, with the thirty-two finalists being selected from those students. Rabanik will be honored at a recognition banquet in March, where the league officials will announce the four statewide Triple A Award winners at that time. Shout-out to OCEO-area schools' two Magnet Elementary Schools that received Merit Awards from the Magnet Schools of America for twenty-twenty-five. Zane Wood Community, a STEAM school, has been named a Magnet School of Excellence, and Weaver Lake, a science, math, and technology school, received a twenty-twenty-five Top Magnet School of Excellence distinction. In the area of contributing to community, District Two-seven-nine Foundation's A Night Out fundraising event took place on Friday, February seventh at Edinburgh USA Golf Course. The event featured a social hour, silent, and live auction, activities, dinner, and a program. Attendees were encouraged to wear Western attire, and a best dress contrast contest was held. During the event, fund-a-need raised over eleven thousand three hundred dollars, and the silent auction exceeded its fifteen thousand dollar goal. Thank you to everyone who joined us for all the All Abilities Resource Fair on February twentieth, which was hosted in partnership with the Brooklyn Park Recreation and Parks. At the event, students, families, and community members visited with representatives from the district, including CVBAT, Student Services, Special Education Advisory Council, and Adapted Sports. Representatives from Hennepin County, Special Olympics of Minnesota, Wilderness Inquiry, RISE, Alina Health, St. David's Center, Mini-Hops Gymnastics, Best Buddies, The Wild and We Can Ride, also had booths, in addition to many other local resources that families and community members can utilize. In the area of lifelong learning, Brooklyn Middle STEAM School held a festive celebration of culture the evening of February thirteenth, when students, families, and the community came out to the school in large numbers to take part in the colorful event. The multicultural fair included student speakers, a dinner with ethnic food offerings, games, Hannah tattoos, and a fashion show with traditional clothing from countries all around the world. Several district schools closed out the month of January with science, technology, and engineering and math STEM-themed events for their students and families. The recent events included a STEM night at Garden City Elementary, a math night at Zane Wood Community STEAM School, and a science and engineering night at Palmer Lake Elementary. OCEO-area schools' community-based vocational assessment and training, or CVBAT, program, hosted its annual Manufacturing, Skilled Trades, and Construction Career Fair on January twenty-ninth. Though hosted this year at Park Center Senior High School, the event was open to high school students from any district high school. The career fair had twenty-six different companies, unions, and organizations represented.
Approximately seventy-five students from Park Brook Elementary School attended the Luminary Lopet February eighth, where the school's choir performed a concert for attendees. The Luminary Lopet is an annual winter festival that features a candlelit trail, ice features, opportunities for outdoor recreation on skis and snowshoes, fire dancers, music, and youth events. Thanks to a grant from the District Two-seven-nine Foundation, Birch Grove School for the Arts has begun offering ukulele lessons for interested students during the school's art electives time. The students will perform at a showcase event March seventeenth. In the area of mission-driven employees, the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, or MASA, recently announced their twenty-twenty-five Regional Administrators of Excellence, and our very own superintendent, Dr. Kim Heil, has been recognized as the organization's award winner for Region Nine. Award recipients are chosen based on their leadership, concern for students, and active involvement in professional and community affairs, along with their strong communication skills and high expectations for themselves and others. Congratulations, Dr. Heil. During the last few weeks, we have, we have celebrated National School Counseling Week, Para-Professional, or ESP, Recognition Week, School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and School Resource Officer Day. Check out our district website to learn more about these recognitions and some of the dedicated staff members who work with our students each day. Thank you to all of these staff members for everything that you do. Four OCEO-area schools educators were named candidates for the twenty-twenty-five Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. In the next few months, semifinalists and finalists will be named from the pool of one hundred and forty-two candidates, with the Teacher of the Year being announced at a banquet in May. Congratulations to the nominees. Stefan Wolf, the music specialist at Cedar Island Elementary School, was recently named Minnesota Music Educator Education Association's MMEA Elementary Music Educator of the Year. This award recognizes exemplary music teachers throughout Minnesota that have demonstrated excellence in teaching, leadership, and advocacy in music education.
All right, so we just have a few final notes and reminders for this evening. Kindergarten orientation events, uh, believe it or not, will be taking place through March, April, and May at all district elementary school sites for students beginning school in the fall of twenty-twenty-five. To learn more and view all orientation dates, please visit our website at districttwosevennine.org/kindergarten-orientation. And once again, just a reminder on attendance boundary timeline, February twenty-eighth, updated boundary scenarios will be posted online. Community information meetings were held on March fourth at Northview Middle School and March nineteenth at OCEO Middle School. Thank you for your continued support, and that concludes tonight's superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. Our next agenda item is our school board reports. Director Dawson, do you have a reporter update?
I do not.
Director Foster, do you have a reporter update?
I do. Uh, I am a member or liaison with DPAC as part of my board duties, and I was able to attend the February tenth meeting that was held virtually. The speaker that evening was Angie Vavatzen, I am hopefully pronouncing that correctly. Um, she's a teacher at Park Center that's leading the bar building assets reducing risk program. Um, and this conversation came out of the December meeting. The group um has chosen to pursue digging deeper into the middle school experience of our students and how we can create a better experience at those grade levels. So, it was a really cool meeting.
Thank you. Director Brooks?
Yeah, I attended the RISE committee meeting um earlier this month, and um a couple of um topics that were discussed at the meeting were, one, making sure that they were aware and had a space to ask questions related to the boundary changes. Um, so grateful to staff for being able to, being willing to dive in um a little more on that topic. And then also spent some time talking about um the concerns in the community around immigration impacting um, you know, many of our students while in school, but also their families while um they're in school. Um, and so talked a little bit about our process um and some of the communications that have come out from the district um to manage that process. And then lastly, I feel like we forgot an important uh point of excellence. The two Park Center grads that were featured on Love is Blind on Netflix, so.
I just learned about that today.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Director Tate, do you have a report?
Yeah, I do. So, uh, ECMAC was at that, which is some, you know, this is great feedback there, particularly around our, all the work that's happening with our elementary and middle school boundaries. Um, I love the tour and the session we had at Northview Middle School. Uh, even though I realize I can't help myself, when I'm in a middle school, I guess slap the doorframe as I go through. And then, uh, they've had some, some really great intermediate two-eight-seven meetings, um, and they're doing some really interesting work around reshaping the goals for the students and staff. And particularly, you know, as you, as you're not looking at traditional quantitative measures that can be, you know, universally applied um in those communities, so, it's good.
Director Mitchell?
Yes, also the recent ECMAC meeting, I'm there with Keith, and we were presented reports and an in-depth analysis, taking a look at the enrollment and capacity numbers in light of the boundary change scenarios. Um, and I think this was helpful to get in, you know, breakout rooms where you're talking with district staff and community members and parents, um, so that they can have some of those immediate questions answered. Um, there's also an in-depth report taking a look at the growth of the Northwest part of our district. And I really encourage people, I recently drove in this area, and I think your eyes are really open to see the growth, the explosion of growth, um, and just the need for these changes. So, if you haven't seen that yet, I encourage you to take a drive and check it out, so, thank you.
And as a reminder, with all of our advisor committees, advisory committees, um, they're all available on the website. Most of the committees generally have openings and are always looking for more community members, um, parents, and parents to participate, so always go look and keep your eye out. And there are times of the year where we specifically open it up for applications, so just want to make sure to make that plug. Sometimes, serving on those committees, like with ECMAC, there's a lot of monitoring, and then we get to this point where there's boundary changes, and, and really, that's a key group that we use to provide input to the processes, so. Um, so serving on those advisory committees are a really great opportunity to have your voice heard. For me, I have one report for B-Bay, the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth, um, as we serve on Board for Joint Powers, and that was just our first meeting of the year where we re-elected our officers uh for the, the board roles on that organization and reviewed our strategic plans, so. That's one of the organizations that we work very closely with, and I, I know you get the reports and take a look at those. I also want to pause just to uh acknowledge the award, the Regional Administrator of Excellence Award that Dr. Heil received, and um, we have so many incredible leaders, and just even with the teachers that are up for the award, and um, our cabinet members and um and principals and educators are winning awards um left and right, where we are.
Students, our.
Yes, our students. And so, it's. And so, this is just really a district of excellence, and who leads our district in the superintendent role is really instrumental to creating that environment. And Dr. Heil has always brought integrity and honor to her role as superintendent, so congratulations, and we're thankful to have you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a presentation to be shared by John Morrison, Executive Director of Finance and Operations. It'll be on the Maple Grove Senior High School, Building a Better Future.
Okay, so, we're gonna have a little bit of a pause because the few presentations we have coming up got deleted off the screen. So, Kelly's trying to grab them real quick, we have them all on a flash drive, just give us a sec. But I'll go ahead and kind of get started because what I'm going to show you for Maple Grove is, first of all, thank you Chair Prince and everyone on the board. A little flustered, but we'll get it. The, the Maple Grove project is a little bit unique in one way, in that we split it. So normally, when you're doing projects of this size, it goes out for public bid. And it's one, everything we do in there is part of the public bid document. This project is a little over ninety million dollars as a total. But we had an opportunity to utilize a cooperative agreement through Sourcewell, which is a, an organization that does joint powers agreements that school districts and government agencies can use to, to essentially guarantee we're getting the best pricing possible. And so, and so we utilized that. Okay, we'll get there. We utilized that on our, the mechanical portion of, of everything that we're going to do for all the mechanical renovations at Maple Grove Senior. So that ends up being about a third, so about, about thirty million dollars of the project will be in the packet, as you see, as just an approval of a provider via Sourcewell. So, the nice thing for us is with that, we are actually able to guarantee a certain price level, which is very rare in projects of this. Normally, we are bound by the lowest, lowest bidder in the process. And the benefit for the district is the contractor that won the state contract for the lowest bid through Sourcewell is the preferred vendor that we normally use for mechanical, and definitely one that has a great reputation, so we're really excited to be able to do this. It is new for our district. The Sourcewell contract has only been available for about three years. So it's the first time we're, we're using them, though. That's the reason why you're going to see in the consent agenda, there's a bid award and a Sourcewell approval. Just again, from a transparency, we wanted to put both, even though by using that cooperative agreement, we don't technically need to bring it in front of the school board. So that is my stalling while I try to figure out what happened here quick. So what I'm going to show is all the pictures of everything that's going on and all the changes that we'll have at Maple Grove. This will open for us, we'll get started. Okay. So I'm just going to kind of walk you through the building, and I'll orient you on the first couple pictures as we start outside. To the upper right is a little description of the building and the direction that you're looking, and this is throughout the, the presentation to just kind of show what the angle is. And if you're not sure, your orientation in the building, where you're looking from, that's what that means. So this is a view as you're, if you had parked down in the student parking lot and you're walking up to school. This is what that view is. A view from, from the upper parking lot for the high school. The main entry, we're, we're actually putting a really large addition on the front to bring it forward, to add office, make some changes to the, to bathrooms in that front area, and really open it up so you have a much more open entry commons that, that you would see more traditionally in newer school buildings. This is a view coming in from the, the northern end, as you're coming down towards, more towards the activities. There's an addition that'll come onto this corner that I'll show you in a little bit that is strength and conditioning. This is your first view of the three-story addition on the northeast corner of the building. This is the primary academic addition, we're adding twenty-one classrooms down here. And this is a look at where the new, much, much expanded cafeteria. I think we, a little more than doubled the size of the cafeteria here in this school. And so we pushed that out into the commons, which as you can still see, we saw plenty of space out front to have like a outdoor seating area, and even a potential like outdoor classroom type environment. This is just as you're going around, continuing around the corner. This isn't a view you can actually have because there's trees and a dome in the way once you get over to this spot, but they, they still gave us that view. So we move inside, this is a look at the new front entry as you just walked in the front door. As you can see, it's a lot more expansive, and it opened up and connected, so no longer do you go through a sliding door that can come down and separate off the academic wing or separate off where the auditorium is. That's all gone and open, and meant to be more of a central common space. So here's a look back as you see kind of the main glass front entry in, in each of those areas. The, the new, there's an addition to the front office to add additional office space, conference space, and a secure front entry that we have not had at that site. Previously, you got buzzed through, and it could come in the door and had to walk across to visit with Mona, our lovely colleague who always takes care of everyone at Maple Grove. Now that will be in a secure vestibule similar to the other security that we have in our other schools. This is now the, for lack of a better term, the living room of the school. The media center has been expanded to come out into this living area, soft seating, comfortable places for students to gather, do homework, do projects. There's actually a tech help desk within it, and then the heart of the media center is just behind it. But just to kind of give you an idea, and this also spills into what would be the lobby area of the auditorium. There's a look, there's a couple views of inside the media center here. Just updates and renovations, you're still going to have kind of a book stack area, and then a more teaching area on either side, and some other flexible spaces with some conference rooms. This is a look at the new cafeteria. So just to orient you a little bit, the, the columns that you see, the big ones in the middle, that's about where today's cafeteria ends. So everything to the left of that is new. You will also see off in the distance, a very large staircase. So we're connecting the second floor to the first floor with a staircase that the, the part on the right is really your circulation part, and the part on the left is what's called a learning staircase. It's really an opportunity to either have an amphitheater-type impromptu class, or students to just hang out if they want to on it. There's actually plugs and, and ways to plug into if you wanted to charge devices and all that along that. It's just a good place to be able to go do something else that might not be sitting at a lunch table. Here's a view from up above, that same area. We are putting a school store in actually all three of our high schools, but this is the view of what Maple Grove would look like. The kitchen in, and along with the cafeteria renovations, the kitchen is getting a full renovation here too, to expand it. So we will go to five full lines to be able to serve all the students that are expected at this building. This is the, what's kind of the secondary commons. So today, when you walk into that building, if you're on the main floor and you make your way back into the academic wing, towards the, the forum room, there's a bank of lockers and a kind of a staircase that goes down. We're actually removing that staircase out since the big learning stair and circulation stairs onto the side, and turning that into a secondary commons. So there's another area to be able to do again. The intention is independent work, options to be able to break out and do something else in another space. It's also over the top of the cafeteria, so if you want a maybe less noisy area than the cafeteria, you can come up here and eat if you want, just giving more options. So now we're moving into the academic wing, so this is the hallway that's, that's connecting the two together. It's a hallway, it's not all that exciting. Once you're in the middle, this is kind of what that feels like. So you have, again, those, those different learning options down the middle, and then classrooms on either side with learning on display. So we can see there's glass into the classrooms, and you can see in and out very easily. Also allows teachers who might be working with some students inside the classroom to be passively monitoring students who might be working on a project out in the hall. Just a good look of what a renovated classroom looks like. In a number of places through the building, we have updated our bathrooms to provide more of a universal or a privacy bathroom option. So in this case, there's six bathrooms that are all individual stalls with individual doors. One of them has a sink inside it as well, but it's just, again, is, is with the intention of providing more privacy and options for students. One of the big additions that was talked about with Park Center is CTE. And so while we're just in the planning process with theirs, this is what the CTE wing will look like in Maple Grove. So again, where we're really focusing on that career and tech education, there's dedicated space that will be a hundred percent renovated. A big portion of the addition is driven to this. And then the last piece is the strength and conditioning area, which is an add-on. This is an addition for two reasons. One, to provide more strength and conditioning, but two, to add another FIAID space. With the growth in students, we need another PE space that could serve for the class, and so that's what this space is. And another look when you're in it and how it connects to the existing weight room. And that is it for those. So that is one of, there's a few other bid approvals that you'll see in your consent agenda. This is obviously the largest one, and as we were following through with our BBF presentations, we wanted to make sure as we bring the major projects forward, we show everyone what they look like. And so we've already, you've already seen Fernbrook and Edinburgh's views in the previous presentation, but those are also in for your approval this evening, so. Any questions I can answer for you?
Board members, questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think it looks amazing. It's very exciting.
Yeah, this, so the mess will begin the Monday after spring break. We were actually taking over the FIAID portion, the locker rooms down there, and this strength and conditioning, and getting started immediately while school's still in session. So we're, we're been working with the school to make sure that we can shift things, but the blessing for us is the athletic locker rooms really aren't used in the spring, so we can shift and use FIAID locker rooms as athletic locker rooms while we rebuild the athletic locker rooms and start putting this addition on. And then all the other additions you'll see start to go up, but they'll take a, a good year before we're connecting them to the building in the summer of twenty-six.
Thank you for stating, school is still in session.
School is still in session for that one, yes. You, you will see us do that on, on numerous occasions, and the, the reason is to try to get a little bit ahead so we can meet the goal of being done when kids come back, not still working, trying to work through bugs. And I mean, there's always little things, but trying to get through the, the ninety-eight percent is done by the time we get there.
Great, thank you. It's really awesome to be able to see all of the renditions, and we were, like was mentioned, we were just at Northview Middle School, and there's been a lot of work done already there. I love that the, the way that we're re-investing in our schools more closely mirrors like the real life experience out in careers and in college. All of the natural light creates that different environment for the students and scholars, so this is really nice to kind of show and tell. So every time we do this, it's, it's fun, and lots more coming.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next agenda item is the consent agenda. Board members, our consent agenda items this evening include meeting minutes and financial reports for January twenty-twenty-five, organizational meeting minutes, extended educational trips, fundraisers, personnel items, grants, many construction bid approvals, and several other organizational business items. Are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed? Moved by Director Brooks, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Dawson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes, six to zero. All right, moving on to our first action item. The first action item is the approval of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five mid-year budget. Information will be shared by Kelly Benusa, Director of Business Services. Kelly?
Good evening, Chair Prince, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. The purpose of this evening's presentation is to provide information on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five mid-year budget revisions. Tonight, you'll see a few places where expenditure adjustments continue to be impacted by staffing shortages. These items are noted in the presentation as one-year-only adjustments, and will need to be added back to our fiscal year twenty-six adopted budget. At last year's June meeting, the board approved the adopted budgets for all of our budgeted funds. The first column on this slide shows the adopted budget for the general fund. The second column highlighted in blue are the mid-year adjustments for revenues and expenditures. The net change is an increase to fund balance of nine-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand. This is made up of an increase of four-point-seven million, or one-point-five-one percent increase for revenues, and an increase of three-point-eight million, or one-point-two-one percent for expenditures. Overall, the net change is zero-point-one-four percent of the combined revenue and expenditure budgets. We'll continue to project a deficit for twenty-five of seven-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand. Included in this revision are additional new revenue and expenditure categories that are part of this last legislative session. As you'll see, these new revenues are being offset by new expenditures. These were not part of the adopted budget, since guidance was not available at that time. On the next slides for expenditures, we'll have highlighted items that are one-time only, savings or costs, which need to be added back to that fiscal year twenty-six adopted budget. The revenue budget changes are as follows. Three-point-two-million-dollar increase in special education due to revised formula estimates, and a one-point-seven-million dollars for the prior year decreased tuition costs. Seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar increase in interest revenue, a seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-dollar increase for new red act teacher training, which is offset by new red act expenditures for one year only. This is a new revenue category from the twenty-three legislative session, and a four-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-dollar decrease in summer unemployment. This slide shows several smaller items, such as a three-hundred-and-seven-thousand-dollar increase to tax shift for reemployment and career tech, and an increase in delinquent taxes. A two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-dollar net increase in general education, which includes a prior year under accrual of three-hundred-thousand dollars. A two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar decrease in desegregation transportation, and a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase for endowment. This slide shows the remaining revenue adjustments for third-party billing and non-public transportation. The decrease in third-party billing is offset by moving expenditures out of third-party billing expenditures and into either federal special education grants or state special education. All of these amounts total the four-point-seven-million-dollar positive revenue adjustment. Next, the expenditure budget is increasing by three-point-eight million from the adopted budget. Throughout the expenditures, you'll see one-time savings or costs that need to be added to the fiscal year twenty-six adopted budget. We analyze those expenditures in four categories: salaries, benefits, purchase services, and other. So starting with those salaries, we have a three-point-three-million-dollar increase in FTE estimates for counselors and psychologists, and contract settlements and estimates. A one-point-one-million-dollar decrease for open special education teachers, school psychologists, nurses, special education ESPs, and human resource staff. Those are all being offset by increases in our consulting services. Those are one-time savings. Then we have the seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-dollar offset for the new red act teacher training component, which we just talked about, the revenue piece, which is also a one-time cost. We have a seven-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-dollar decrease for about eight-point-three FTE teachers that were not deployed due to actual enrollment being below our projections, and then a four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-dollar decrease for open positions for custodians and ESPs, and those are one-time savings. We have a four-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-dollar decrease for four-point-nine teachers not deployed due to two-seven-line actual enrollment being below projection. Those are one-time savings. We have a three-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-dollar decrease for attrition and allocation adjustments, and those are going over to the benefit area. We have a hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar decrease for open custodial information systems tech support staff positions, and those are being offset by increases to both supplies and equipment, and those are one-time savings. We have a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-dollar decrease then for our third-party billing salaries, which are being moved to federal special education grants, and then a ninety-six-thousand-dollar increase for one FTE student management specialist staff for safe schools, which is offset by a decrease in the purchase services area for the school resource officer open position. And again, that's for one year only. So this is a combined increase to salaries of six-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand from the adopted budget, and then some of those savings are going to need to be added back for the twenty-six adopted. Next, we'll look at the benefit expenditures. We have a million-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar net increase to employer-paid health insurance premiums and HSA contributions due to a combination of planned migration. Our planned migration was actually twenty-one percent. Our planned migration was actually 21% at our mid-year. And then we have a $379,000 increase for both attrition and allocation. This was the offset that we saw in salaries, and then a $348,000 increase in our FICA. This slide shows the remaining changes for benefits for TRA and disability insurance, and this is a combined increase in employee benefits of about 2.4 million from our adopted budget. So moving on to purchase services, we had an overall increase in expenditures. The largest adjustment is for $1.1 million increase in consulting services. This is offset by those open salary positions, and it's a one-time cost. We have a $766,000 increase in post-secondary education or PSEO, intermediate district 287, and other public schools tuition. And then we have several smaller adjustments, which include a $360, $376,000 decrease in utilities for electric and natural gas, and then a $167,000 decrease for our safe schools unfilled position. And we saw that offset in salaries, and that's for one year only. So this is a combined increase in purchase services of 1.5 million from our adopted budget. And then some of these one-time savings will need to be added back again to our '26 adopted budget. So finally, moving on to our supplies, capital, and other expenditures, we had an overall decrease of $748,000. We have a $533,000 decrease for curriculum adoptions carryover based on prior year actual spend, a $444,000 decrease in intermediate district 287 lease levy for our area learning center instructional spaces. So based on Minnesota Department of Education's new coding requirements, those expenditures are now required to move into our capital expenditure fund, and they're part of our capital fund mid-year revision. We have a $120,000 increase in judgments, and then a $110,000 increase in supplies and equipment for that offset that we saw in salaries for custodial and technology positions. And those are one-time costs. So overall, the net expenditures adjustment is $3.8 million, more than our adopted, and it's about just short of $300,000 that are going to have to be added back for our '26 adoption. So next, we'll review the impact of the mid-year adjustments on the five-year financial projection for our general fund, and this is a high-level visual organizer of our financial forecast. So there's three different sections to this projection. The top section shows our revenues, expenditures, differences, our fund balance, and then our fund balance percentage for a seven-year window that begins in '23 and '24, which are shown in pink, the revised budget for '25, which is in blue, and then projections for '26 through '29, which is in green. So you typically see any operational adjustments that would be needed under the chart. There aren't any at this time. So then the assumptions section shows both the revenue and expenditure assumptions. For revenues, they'll fluctuate between a 2 and a 3% increase to the general basic formula allowance, and those estimates are provided by the Minnesota Department of Ed. And then our expenditures are projected to increase 3%, which is consistent with prior year tactics and isn't being changed currently. So if we exceed those 3% of costs, we'll be outside our parameters, and we'd be deficit spending at a greater rate than what's on this projection. So also included in this projection is a potential hold harmless for compensatory funding of 5.5 million for '26 only. So compensatory is currently estimated to decrease for our district by about $5.5 million from our fiscal year '25 to our fiscal year '26 entitlement. So this would provide the district one year to determine a plan for potential reductions in compensatory funding due to changes in how it's being calculated. So there is consideration at the legislative session to maintain compensatory at that fiscal year '25 level for '26. However, due to the timing of the session ending and then any guidance that they can provide currently, it would have a negative impact on our staffing, which needs to start in February for '26, and that's why it's being included. So this next section shows the budget projections for both revenues in blue and expenditures in red, and the lines show the general trends of each of those items. So as you can see, expenditures are projected to outpace our revenues, beginning in the current year by $741,000. So we don't have another lever like the operating referendum that was approved by our community for last year to account for any additional spending in the future. And then this final section looks at the fund balance projection for the same time. The green bars represent our actual and projected fund balances for each year, and then the orange bar shows that minimum required 5% as set in board policy. Again, the lines show the general trend for the fund balance as it relates to that minimum. As you can see, fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is projected to start decline in the current year. So we are going to continue to monitor the financial projection to maintain that board-required minimum fund balance of 5% in the future. So moving on to the Food and Nutrition Services Fund, the revenue and expenditure budgets are increasing for a net positive change to fund balance of 1.1 million. Revenues are increasing due to higher participation in the preschool meals program for lunch and breakfast, as well as à la carte sales. Expenditures are increasing for increased staffing of previously unfilled positions and then food costs due to higher meal participation. The Community Service Fund revenue and expenditure budgets are increasing for a net positive change to fund balance of $339,000. Revenues increase because of more participation in youth enrichment and kid stop programs, as well as interest revenue. And then expenditures increase due to filling open positions for kid stop due to more participation. The capital expenditure fund revenue budget will be increased by 1.7 million. The expenditure budget is increasing by $954,000 for a net positive change to fund balance of $707,000. Revenues are increasing by $830,000 for the red act curriculum component for fiscal year '25 only, a $251,000 increase for E-rate revenue collected from 24 projects, and then $500,000 in technology equipment sales. Expenditures are increasing mostly in additional computer purchases, purchase order carryovers for technology equipment, and leases, partially again due to that new Minnesota Department of Education coding requirement. Those items previously were in the general fund. And then the last fund is the Debt Service Fund, and that revenue budget will be increased for a positive change of $202,000. Revenues are increasing due to increased interest revenue, and our fund balance for June 30th, 2025 is projected to be about $11.5 million or 44% of expenditures. And then this last slide shows a summary of the net mid-year budget revisions in those five funds that we budget for, which are all positive for this revision. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 mid-year budget as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Director Tate. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. Is there any discussion? Very thorough, as always. Appreciate all of the detail. I think that's really important for our public transparency to see this, and we've reviewed this in work session as well, and so I think we just have a really fantastic process as usual as we move through this.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion passes six to zero. The next action item is the approval of fiscal year 2026 general fund and community service adjustments and capital expenditure budget. Information will be shared by John Morsted, Executive Director of Finance and Operations. John?
Thank you, Chair Prince, Dr. Heil, board members. Good evening again. The purpose of this evening's presentation is to provide information about the FY26 recommended operating budget adjustments and FY26 proposed capital expenditure budget. Our recommendation this evening will be that the school board approve both budgets as presented. The recommendations are being shared this evening are part of the annual budget planning process. Budget decisions are made using the Long Range Financial Planning Framework, or LRFP. This framework includes a financial forecasting model that projects out for the next several years and provides a basis for our budget planning while focusing on financial stability, and you just saw that as Kelly went through it for the current year. The budget decisions are evaluating, using, are evaluated using the collaborative approach that engages a multitude of district stakeholders. Budget planning includes aligning our resources with the mission and strategic plan, an assessment of the impact on productivity and essential services, and compliance with legal requirements. The school board engages in several work sessions throughout the budget development process, and at the February 11th work session, the board heard and considered budget adjustment recommendations. So this evening, our first action item for your consideration is the FY26 budget adjustments. In keeping with the direction provided by the score, school board, the FY26 general fund budget adjustment recommendation includes maintaining a zero-based budget. The LRFP budget summary document in your board packet gives the details of all program efficiency abandonment and redirection or pairs, including the category for the change, the dollar amount, and the summary of the change. I'll just give you kind of a quick highlight, starting with community engagement in the general. This is a $350,000 increase for repurposing of site staffing and operational support, which is offset, and I'll jump to the Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, where we're offsetting that $350,000 with a few changes, but I'm going to go through the full list. So the addition of boys and girls lacrosse at all high schools, including coaches, supplies, transportation, and event fees. Expenses are offset by participation fees and gate receipts. The addition of one shuttle for OEC or the Oseo Education Center students for out-of-school job experiences due to an increase in the number of students in the program. As you recall, in previous legislation, they changed the range for the transition program from 18 to 21 to 18 to 22. So there's more students, and we need to have more opportunities there. The addition of 2.0 FTE special education teachers and 2.0 FTE educational support pair professionals, or professionals, excuse me, involuntary pre-kindergarten to support additional seats allocated to Oseo area schools. The reduction of 2.0 FTE special education teachers and 2.0 FTE educational support professionals for special ed general support. These FTE will be funded through federal special ed grants. The addition of 7.21 FTE social workers to continue the current FTE previously funded with a one-year strategic investment, now funded through the increase in pupil support aid provided by the Department of Education. And also on here in the area, or the Instructional and Information Technology Team Division, or I2T2, is the addition of 1.0 FTE cybersecurity analyst and reduction of 1.0 FTE application analyst to provide dedicated staffing allocation to support continuing cybersecurity efforts for Oseo schools. These changes in the general fund result in a net zero change to the budget. And the last item that we always add is our annual contingency for enrollment growth above projections. This is an addition of 22.1 FTE teacher contingency. This proposal creates contingent budget capacity to target areas of non-projected enrollment growth with additional classroom teacher FTE if needed. The final three recommendations are listed here. The addition of .87 FTE lead, leave, and absence management specialists to support changes in legislation related to paid family medical leave earned safe and sick time and unemployment. The addition of 433,300 or so to add budget capacity to support a new payroll tax for the family medical leave changes in legislation. This is the number we know today. I did find out something earlier today that said that number will change. They're already increasing it, so just be aware, we'll at least start the approval where we can. The addition of 1.0 FTE principal, 1.0 FTE resource manager for nine months, 1.0 FTE elementary school administrative assistant for six months, 1.0 FTE building engineer for two months, and 1.0 FTE grounds person for two months to support the startup of the new elementary school in northeast Maple Grove. I will turn it back to Chair Prince for a possible motion to approve the FY26 budget recommendations.
Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 general fund and community service adjustments and capital expenditure budget as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Director Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Tate. Is there any discussion?
So this isn't the capital part. This is just...
Oh, sorry. Okay, let me amend that.
We'll come back to the capital part.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, so now we'll move on to the capital.
Thank you. So to continue the number parade, we'll talk about the fiscal '26 capital expenditure budget. Again, the school board discussed this at the February 11th work session, and we'll give you a quick overview of those expenditures that we're proposing. This slide shows the proposed budget for our operating capital by each division and department. Operating capital is a zero-based budget, so each item included in this funding proposal was accompanied by a capital request that was moved through the LRFP process. The items included in the operation, operating capital budget must align with statutory guidance for designation as a capital item. Any staff salaries benefits included in these capital budgets must be directly related to the acquisition, operation, and maintenance of telecommunications systems, computers, and related equipment. In the, with the Community Engagement Division, just under $73,000 to replace two staff computers, replace 200 student computers for adult basic ed, purchase eight computers for facility scheduling staff, and a contingency for equipment replacement. With the Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, $3,100,000 to replace sports uniforms and equipment, music attire, and marching band uniforms, following a predetermined replacement schedule. Place instruction, excuse me, purchase instructional materials and curriculum resources, maintain concurrent enrollment offerings, purchase media center materials, maintain online software resources, maintain a contingency for the career and tech education program, maintain capital allocations and replace capital equipment, and pay leases for venues hosting. Oops, sorry, we're not doing that one anymore. The, in the Human and Administrative Resource Team, HART, $5 million, about $5,200,000 to maintain our lease commitments for instructional spaces, athletic facilities, flexible rooms, equipment, camera systems, and so on. Contingencies for equipment, special assessments, insurance deductibles, and security and emergency management. Purchase capital equipment for a new elementary for interior and exterior maintenance. Replace grounds maintenance and custodial equipment, and replace nine automated external defibrillators or AEDs. And the Instructional and Information Technology Team, I2T2 Division, they're actually just using E-rate revenue to maintain enterprise technology licensing support, internet and cloud backup session, backup solutions, so it's just a zero net charge to the district. Overall, operating capital total of $8,347,485. The next slide shows the proposed budget for the capital projects or technology and safety levy. Voters approved this in 2022 at 4.701% of adjusted net tax capacity. So again, by division, just two divisions in this group, the HART division is utilizing just under 22.1 million for replacing camera and card access systems, maintaining camera licenses, visitor management systems, tip lines, the door intrusion system, adding additional digital two-way radios throughout the district, contingency for technology-related security equipment, the addition of 1.0 FTE technology support specialists to support security and emergency management technology systems. And in the I2T2 Division, $12,300,000 to continue enterprise technology positions, secondary support positions, and administrative supports position. Transfer .875 FTE instructional technology ESP staff from special ed federal grants to the technology levy. Maintain enterprise technology licensing support, software and licenses, internet filtering, Wi-Fi access, and technology repair parts. Maintain existing technology equipment leases. Maintain digital displays, cybersecurity services, phone systems, software switches, wireless access points, mobile device management software, software subscriptions and licenses, the school notification system, and a unified print solution. Maintain a device repair contingency, purchase and install wireless displays for new elementary classrooms, and purchase charging carts. The total capital projects technology levy is $14,497,000. So the recommendation from the district is approval of the 2026 capital expenditure budget. That includes operating capital and capital project technology safety levy expenditures, which total $22,740,000. which total twenty-two million seven hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, and I will turn it back to Chair Prince.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six capital expenditure budget as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Director Tate. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Brooks. Is there any discussion? And thank you for all of the work from the Finance Department and all of the departments that go into preparing this, and we reviewed this in depth at the work session as well. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so the approval of these budgets will allow our leadership teams to proceed with the staffing process and begin pre-planning for items that require lead time, significant lead time for completion prior to the start of the twenty-sixth school year. We will finalize the budget details, as well as monitor ongoing legislative sessions and the impacts on the twenty twenty-six budget. These budgets will be included with the entire budget package discussed at the June tenth school board work session and presented for approval at the school board meeting on June twenty-fourth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a recommendation for approval on the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment before the, between the ISD two seventy-nine School Board and Student Management Specialists, July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Information will be shared by Yvonne Short-Slynn, Executive Director of Human Resources. Yvonne.
Thank you, Chair Prince. Excuse me. First of all, I wanted to thank the Labor Relations Director and the bargaining team of the Student Management Specialists. This is the first contract for this group. I do want to point out, the dates were just read, but I do want to point out that this contract is, starts, the effective date is July first of twenty twenty-three, and it ends this June. This group was embedded in another contract, and this is a new contract, so we're pretty much towards the end of that contract. So again, I want to thank all of the parties for reaching an agreement. I'm just going to provide a high-level overview because the board has the redlined contract, as well as the memorandum in your board materials. Substantively, the terms and conditions of this agreement include compensation contractual increases in the first and second years of the contract. The first year of the contract, which again is twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, is a five percent increase to base salary. The second year, a three percent increase to base salary. That second year of the contract is again this current fiscal year. The agreement also includes changes in other terms and conditions of the contract, changes to employer contributions to group insurance coverage, some changes to the leave of absence section of the contract, and also deferred compensation. This contract also has five memoranda of understanding, and they were either, again, revised, some were pulled out from the I through M contract, or added to this new contract with Student Management Specialists. The total amount of, of the total package of the increase is nine point zero one percent. The total financial investment for this group of SMS employees is two hundred eighty thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars, which is within the financial parameters established by the board. It is the superintendent's and my recommendation that the contract be approved, and with board approval and ratification of the contract, HR and payroll will begin implementation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District two seventy-nine School Board and Student Management Specialists, July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Moved, the motion by Director Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Dawson. Is there any discussion? So echoing appreciation for everybody involved, and I'm glad that we were able to come to consensus for this group. We value all of, all of our different groups and staff members. Every single group and staff member contributes to our District of Excellence and to the student experience. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, the next set of action items are the second reading of policies. So we have quite a number to go through. All of the policies up for second reading were shared in the first reading on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and we did go through those one by one in detail as well. General Counsel Amy Moore will share the information, and will take action on each individual policy. Amy.
Thank you. So these policies have been posted since last month, and we have not received any comment or questions for updates. So what is being presented is what you heard at the last board meeting. So the first policy, four oh four, family and medical leave for school district employees. We moved up the eligibility and qualifying reasons for FMLA leave, FMLA leave, and clarified what those two sections meant in more precise language, and then some other wording updates that you'll see. And the other change was in section nine, really eliminating some wording that wasn't needed for clarification reasons. So those were the updates to policy four oh four.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy four oh four, family and medical leave for school employees with proposed edits?
So moved.
Moved by Director Mitchell, second.
Second.
But seconded by Director Foster. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Policy four twenty, students and employees with communicable diseases and infectious conditions. We are proposing the policy to be approved. As it is, there were no updates that we found were required for the policy. We did include an update to the procedure, talking about how we will comply with Minnesota statute as it relates to immunizations and documentation, as well as, as well as some other updates regarding that we don't keep out students for eye drainage unless there's some other illness involved.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy four twenty, students and employees with communicable diseases as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Director Brooks, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Dawson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Policy four twenty-seven, workload limits for certain special education teachers. What we did is we removed the procedure, which just included the definitions that you see now in the policy.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy four twenty-seven, workload limits for certain special education teachers with proposed edits?
So moved.
Moved by Director Tate. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Policy four forty-two, travel. We added a purpose and general statement of the policy, consistent with other policies that we have, and then referenced the fact that taxi or ride-share services are now in
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy four forty-two, travel with proposed edits?
So moved.
Motion by Director Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Policy seven oh five on investments. The updates you will see are to, that you'll see with this and other policies to come are to align the language with Minnesota School Boards Association policy language, as well as including scope and purpose and general statements of the policies.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy seven oh five, investments with proposed edits?
So moved.
Moved by Director Mitchell, second.
Second.
By Director Dawson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Policy seven oh six, investments for other post-employment benefits trust. Similar to the last, we updated to include scope and purpose and general statement that aligns with Minnesota School Boards Association policies, as well as with that one kind of clarifying that officials and employees part of investment process shall act professionally, really setting our expectations for our employees when they're involved in these investments.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy seven oh six, investments other post-employee benefits with proposed edits?
So moved.
Motion by Director Brooks, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Policy seven twenty-two, public data and data subject requests. For that policy, we updated to include in section, section J, informing individuals of their rights under data practices, and kind of what that process would look like.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy seven twenty-two, public data and data subject requests with proposed edits?
So moved.
Motion by Director Dawson, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Brooks. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Policy seven thirty, fund balance. We updated the language to align with Minnesota School Boards Association policy, and to make sure the language is consistent with other policies that you have now passed.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy seven thirty, fund balance with proposed edits?
So moved.
Moved by Director Tate, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Policy seven thirty-one, post issuance debt compliance policy. The updates are really to the titles of this policy for consistency.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy seven thirty-one, post issuance debt compliance with proposed edits?
So moved.
Motion by Director Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Last one, policy seven forty, electronic signatures. This was a newer policy to us last year, and because it's in the seven forties, we're keeping it part of the three-year cycle. There are no proposed updates since we passed it recently.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy seven forty, electronic signatures as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Director Tate, seconded by Director Brooks. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. All right, the final action item is gifts to the district. Is there a motion to approve gifts to the district totaling sixty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and eighteen cents?
So moved.
Moved by Director Foster. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Brooks. Is there any discussion? Thank you so much to everybody who gives in this way to continue to support our district. Every single month, it's, you know, large numbers after large numbers, and it really makes a difference in what we're able to offer our students in addition to our funding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, at this time, we will take a brief recess and then reconvene in the forum room for a closed session. The session will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot zero three for labor negotiations with AESPs, ESPs, kid stop instructors, RNs, and LPNs. Is there a motion to recess the regular meeting for ten minutes and reconvene in the forum room for a closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Director Mitchell, second. By Director Dawson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero. This meeting is recessed at eight forty-one PM. The school board meeting will adjourn at the conclusion of the closed session.